The thing is why.
Good afternoon. I'm going to call to order the Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners Committee of the whole meeting for December 2nd. We'll begin. Clerk, will you please call the role?
Commissioner Ray.
Present.
Chair Strebs.
Here.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler. Commissioner DeLu.
Here.
Commissioner Gissler.
Here.
Vice Chair Protem Hepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazur.
Here.
Commissioner Morales. You have seven present.
Thank you, Clerk. I did hear from Commissioner Wheeler, who had a work conflict, but will be joining us for her session at 6:30. All right, we'll move on to item number two, which is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak in person or by phone. They may call in at 855-925-2801 and enter meeting code 10748. Then press star three to join the queue. This is an opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes on any topic in a professional and respectful manner. Once you're recognized, please share your name and where you are from. Is there anybody wishing to join us for public comment? Good. On the mic stand, there's a button with a person. There you go. Welcome to you. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Emily Britton, and I serve as a Public Policy Manager at YWCA Kalamazoo. One of our key programmatic pillars is improving the lives of children. For us, that means investing in the safety, well-being, and potential future of every child in Kalamazoo. Today, I'm here to speak on behalf of that pillar and the Kalamazoo residents whom we serve. YWCA Kalamazoo is one of the largest site-based childcare facilities in the county, providing comprehensive childcare to hundreds every year. In 2024, YWCA Kalamazoo served 140 families and over 180 children in our downtown and Edison neighborhood childcare facilities. Though YWCA Kalamazoo is working to fill the dire need for low-cost, low-barrier childcare in this community, we are unable to fulfill the true need that exists within Kalamazoo County. Like many nonprofit organizations across the country, we are facing a steep decline in government funding and ongoing economic uncertainty. We are just one voice in this conversation with many childcare providers facing similar, if not worse, situations. Cuts and closures have resulted in an increased number of families looking for care, yet not enough providers to fill the need. These shortages force families to reduce work hours or leave the workforce entirely, resulting in broad impacts to Kalamazoo's economy. This fact is more than a talking point. One parent receiving childcare at YWCA Kalamazoo shared, quote, "The most beneficial aspect that the dreamery provided to us was the financial assistance over the past few years. Without that assistance, I'm not sure how we would have been able to provide our kids with such great care and opportunities for early development." When we talk to other parents in similar situations, one of the most commonly referenced issues they bring up is cost of cost and quality of childcare. Across Michigan, childcare remains undervalued work. Early childcare, early childhood educators have some of the lowest-paying jobs and often earn poverty-level wages. In our area, many childcare workers make under $14 an hour, wages that fall below Michigan's forthcoming minimum wage increase. These conditions disproportionately affect women, particularly women of color, who are the backbone of the childcare sector. We recognize this inequity and have increased staff wages to address this. It is possible to pay a fair wage and keep costs low for families. However, without community investment, this becomes less realizable. YWCA Kalamazoo stands steadfast in our commitment to providing comprehensive childcare services for our community. However, we, along with other childcare providers in the county, are at a breaking point. Without investment in childcare, there will be a loss in productivity, loss to the overall sector, and loss to community. Access to childcare and fair wages for those who do the work is a community-wide problem that requires a community-wide solution. YWCA Kalamazoo, along with our partners, looks forward to working closely with the county to identify meaningful solutions to these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If there are others who also wish to speak, you can feel free to come forward and organize. We don't have to wait. Dr. Nettleton, welcome.
Great. Well, good afternoon. My name is Dr. William Nettleton. As of this coming January, I would have had the privilege to have served as Kalamazoo County's Medical Director for nine years. I'm here to express thanks to our Administrator and our Deputy County Administrators and to Chair Strebs for all of the effort that has been put in to find our next Health Officer. I'm also here to express support for Deb Lentz, who is our interim Health Officer. She has served as our Deputy Health Officer for quite some years now, and I'd like to attest to her being a steadfast and dedicated public health professional and also as a public servant. And I think she will be a continued asset to the county and to the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome. There you go. Welcome.
Can y'all hear me now? Hi, y'all. My name is Jay Kion, and I serve as the Director of Community Engagement at Michigan Transformation Collective. I'm here today to share what I've been hearing directly from families and childcare providers in our community at recent listening sessions around childcare accessibility in Kalamazoo County. We have a total of 72 voices that I am representing, so please forgive me if it's not perfect. So I want to be direct because they were kind enough to be direct with me. Our childcare system is broken, and it's leaving both the families and our childcare providers behind. We heard from parents who can't go back to work because there are no infant care spaces available, and we heard from a young family approved for childcare assistance but unable to access it because they can't find a provider to accept it. One provider told us that they pay their teachers $10 an hour, not because they want to, but because that's all they can afford. At the same time, families are struggling to pay tuition. Another teacher shared that even $21 an hour isn't enough to feed her own children while caring for others. The people we trust with our children's earliest development can't afford to live in the community that they serve. We had an event where providers revealed their top three priorities: competitive staff wages, resource navigation, and subsidy reimbursement rates that actually cover the cost of care. Right now, childcare providers are subsidizing the system out of their own pockets. Families are being crushed by a gap that falls between 200% and 250% of the federal poverty level, which is too wealthy for DHHS assistance and too poor to afford care. We also heard some beautiful things, solutions from people who are living in this crisis right now. Parents and providers are asking for childcare vouchers. They're asking for expanded TriShare participation from employers across the county. They're asking for Kalamazoo County to invest in childcare because currently our parents are left to choose between a job and caring for their child. They're left to choose between education and survival, between serving children and paying their own bills. Families told us that they need transportation. Families told us that they need transportation to get to childcare and doctor's appointments. Providers told us they need health insurance, predictable subsidy payments, and mental health support. These are not luxuries that we're asking for. These are basics required to maintain a functioning childcare system.
Jay, thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jermaine Robinson. I'm Executive Director at Pre-K International Childcare Center on Kalamazoo's East Side. We are a proud enhancing quality program formerly known as Four Star Center, reflecting our commitment to high standards, well-trained staff, safe nurturing environments. Pre-K International has served low-income families for many years. Families depend on us for transportation, individualized support, and culturally responsive care. We are rooted in neighborhoods we serve. But despite our quality rating and long history of serving high-need families, we continue to face barriers to accessing major early childcare funding streams. These barriers make it difficult to sustainably provide long care for our families, our families need and deserve. We also see a growing trend. Many children who start with us become waitlisted or excluded from publicly funded early child, early learning programs, not because they're ineligible, but because they are already acclimated to Pre-K International or other childcare centers. Parents choose stability. Children choose familiarity. But the current system does not consistently support those choices for low-income families. As a result, children are uprooted from stable environments. Parents lose continuity of their childcare. Community-based centers like ours carry financial burdens without equitable support. At the same time, the Department of Human Services' childcare subsidy, which is supposed to help families afford care from birth to age three, often fails. We see long-approved delays. Sorry. We see long-approved delays, sudden case closures, interrupted payments, and parents losing jobs because reliable care can't be secured in time. These experiences show the need for a local solution that supports the families from the beginning. Tonight, I am asking the board to consider a early childhood voucher program that will provide predictable equitable support for infants and toddlers, allows parents to keep their child in high-quality trusted centers, help providers retain qualified teachers, and reduce turnover, reduce disruptions caused by subsidy. Also reduce disruptions caused by subsidy delays. We also want to ensure and receive consistent care during most critical years of brain development for children. This is an equity strategy. I'm over. Is that like a warning for 30 seconds or is that three minutes? All right. I don't want to go over. I'll come back with a shorter speech. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jermaine. Welcome, Director.
Hello. My name is Lucas Poles. I'm the Environmental Health Division Manager here at Kalamazoo County. Just wanted to say I didn't come for the famous Amos cookies tonight, but I came to show my support for Deb Lentz. She has really been a great colleague here at the Health Department. The last three years I've worked under her, I have high confidence in her and her abilities, and I've truly enjoyed working with her. And I know she's got just not the knowledge, but the heart for what she does and her caring for the community and for us, her staff as well. And I know if we could have those that are with HCS raise their hands to show that we're here to support her as well. So just wanted to be really brief on that, so I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Poles.
Oh, Lucas, I refer to you as Lucius. I don't know why I had that in my notes, but maybe it's Lucius for all I know. Anyway, I apologize for that, and I will never call you anything other than Lucas now. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Gissler. All right. We just have a full agenda. Let's keep moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Beth Bergland. I'm the Director of Policy and Strategy at the Michigan Transformation Collective. You could see a trend happening this evening. I'm here to talk about the high cost of childcare for families. Across Michigan, one thing is clear: Parents can't afford to pay, and teachers can't afford to stay in the industry. In 2023, the U.S. Chamber Foundation found that 14% of parents in Michigan left a job in the past six months due to childcare problems, and 52% made major changes to school or work due to childcare issues. They also found we lose an estimated $2.88 billion in economic activity due to childcare issues and an estimated $575 million annually in tax collections because of employees not being able to go to work. Childcare-related employee turnover and absenteeism cost taxpayers an estimated $2.3 billion a year in Michigan. The highest quality care in Kalamazoo County for infant care is about $400 a week. For a toddler, it's $300 a week. If you have a family with an infant and a toddler, you're paying about $3,600 a year just in childcare. And that's for a high-quality program. For a lower-quality program, you're paying about $11,000 a year for an infant, which is 17% of the area median income for a Kalamazoo County. Families below 200% of the poverty level, which you heard about before, about $65,000 a year for a family of four qualified for a state-funded program that provides their childcare provider on a sliding scale. As their income goes up, the care that they're eligible for is maintained. As they can accept a raise, they can accept a promotion or a job change, and their share of that care goes up. However, if you are above $65,000 a year and you have an infant, a toddler, or a three-year-old in Michigan, there is not a single program for you other than TriShare. And I know you are all very aware of the TriShare program as we've offered it to county employees, and we want employers to have access to this program, and we think that it's a good program for employers to be able to invest in. But as you can imagine, the high cost makes it completely out of reach for small businesses and even large businesses who decide to pay the same benefits for all employees. Essentially giving every employee a $6,000 annual raise is out of touch for most employers. Over a third of TriShare-supported children in Michigan actually live in southwest Michigan. We have 269 of the only 758 children statewide enrolled in TriShare in October in Michigan. So the large employers in our community, Kalamazoo County, Bronson Healthcare, who have invested in that program, we are well taking advantage of that program in our community. But we would propose an investment for small businesses while drawing down state funds by developing a program that we reimburse small businesses for their share of the childcare payment and an additional program to provide a sliding-scale voucher that families could use at any licensed childcare provider in Kalamazoo County based on their income. And again, we ask you to continue supporting persistent concerns across social services and how Kalamazoo County can lead and make our county a place where youngest learners and their caregivers are supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? All right. Welcome to you. Thank you for bringing your little ones with you this evening, too.
Yes, gotta show them what I do.
That's right. Welcome.
My name's Ali Abdule Muttakaleem. I am here on behalf of Michigan Voices, but also as a lifelong citizen of Kalamazoo. I have, as you all just saw, with how long my son took out to pick out snacks, five-year-old twin boys. And I have really struggled with finding childcare, especially for twins, especially when they were zero to three. I had to enter and leave the workforce about two to three times because of the cost of childcare. So it is very difficult to be able to advance my career, being able to provide for like my children. And, you know, with the cost of food and the cost of rent and the wages being very stagnant, I think it's extremely important to make sure that we are supporting families and supporting children, but also making sure that the people who are taking care of our children are also taking care, they're also being taken care of themselves. I am a reproductive justice advocate. I volunteered and worked at Rooted, so I am very dedicated to the work I do. I'm very passionate about the work I do, and it really shows the care and the investment in our future when we really take the time to look at the systems that are possibly preventing people from being able to fully participate and fully show up in their lives. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in chambers? Administrator, do we have anyone online? Okay, thank you. So with that, we'll end this public comment period, and we'll move to item three, review of accounts payable and payroll disbursements. We'll welcome our Finance Director, Ryan Post. Welcome, Director.
Good evening, Chair. Vice Chair. Vice Chair Protem. Board of Commissioners, we have an accounts payable claim list totaling $10,070,67.72 as presented for review. Of this total, the Board of Commissioners has to approve claims totaling $8,513,775.42. Payroll disbursements totaling $4,435,783.76 are presented for the November 21st general and November 28th elected payrolls. We welcome any questions from the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Thank you, and thank you, Finance Director. There was one question I asked you briefly about before the meeting, but hoping to get answered. The LISC housing grant, I think it's on page 24. We've got legal fees for about $9,100. But that'll be reimbursed, that'll be reimbursed to us at a later time?
That is absolutely correct. So within the grants fund, yes, absolutely, that's reimbursement from the grant. So these are expenditures directly to DICMA that at some point we would be reimbursed by the funding source, correct?
So we'd be reimbursed by LISC for that, and that was stuff done in the summertime. I guess my question is, and it's probably not as much for you, but this was from DICMA to write the interlocal agreement for the housing done in July or June of this year. Why are we paying it? Why are we getting reimbursed from LISC for it? One, I guess is probably a question for the Housing Director, but getting reimbursed for it, and why wouldn't it come out of 292? But that's probably a conversation for the Housing Director, not for you. But I appreciate that will be reimbursed, was my question. Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Director.
Thank you very much.
Right. Next, we'll move to item four. We're going to have a presentation on our Health Officer finalists and presentation. And so we'll welcome forward interim Health Officer Deb Lentz. So I want to, you know, just to clarify for the board, I was able to participate in the second round of interviews. We had a really robust search steering or search committee, rather, community stakeholders, partners in public health with us, engaged in that dialogue in the interviews. We did culminate on two final candidates, at which time one of those candidates did withdraw from the process. And so the search committee brings forward to us interim Director Lentz, and she's here today to present to us. We're going to hear about her vision of what her leadership would look like in the Health Officer's role, and then we'll have some discussion. This is a board recommendation, so our board will evaluate the information we gather from the presentation. We'll deliberate, we'll determine if we'll make a recommendation that goes to MDHHS for review for actual approval of Health Officer, or if there's other course of action that we want to discuss. So welcome interim Director Lentz, and please take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Vice Chair Protem, and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today and your trust in me during this process. I'm excited to share my vision for the Health Department as we move forward in the next year. Public health is a core responsibility of county government, and we work directly, and the work we do directly impacts the safety, well-being, and future of our residents. I'm honored to be considered for this role, a role that carries immense responsibility and one that I'm deeply committed to completing. You'll hear me use the word "we" a lot during my presentation. I believe that the best intentions come from shared understanding, not decision makings that are created in silos. So it's very intentional that I, that we, that I present in the "we" form. Public health is a team effort across divisions, across partners, and across our community. That said, I also want to be clear that I am the leader responsible for driving those collaborations, setting the direction, and upholding our values and ensuring follow-through. My role is to create the conditions where we succeed while being fully accountable for the decisions that are made. Before I share my vision of the year ahead, I'd like to briefly share the perspective that I bring to this role. I earned my master, excuse me, earned my bachelor's degree in dietetics from Michigan State University, as well as my master's degree in counseling education from Western. I began my public health career at the Family Health Center, initially as a WIC nutritionist, and then progressively, over 10 years, worked in a variety of supervisor and management roles. Then I started my career at the county. I've been there for 22 years. Some of those roles included WIC supervisor, WIC coordinator, maternal-child health division manager in the last seven years as the Deputy Health Officer. Through my experience in public health crises like H1N1, EEE, and COVID, I developed skills in resilience, strategic planning, and policy development. The events taught me that the importance of remaining calm, providing direct supervision and decisions, and staying connected to the lived experience of the population that we serve. These experiences also shape my leadership values: listening first, providing clear expectations, and supporting my team through challenges. As Health Officer, I will continue to lead with steadiness, empathy, and a focus on improving health outcomes to the people that we serve. With that foundation in place, I'd like to start by outlining the vision we have for the year ahead. At HCS, our effectiveness depends on the strength and stability of our workforce. Our staff across public health, community health, environmental health, nursing, and administration carry out the core responsibilities mandated by the state and supported by the county. To achieve meaningful public health outcomes, we need a workforce that staff feel supported, informed, and connected to a shared purpose. As Health Officer, I will prioritize listening, clear communication, and accountability as the foundation of a strong internal culture. In a department that has experienced significant transition and change, reestablishing consistent communication and expectations is critical. My goal is to ensure that staff have the guidance, support, and engagement they need to provide at a high level. In the first year, I will create more intentional opportunities for staff to share their feedback and offer support and solutions. This includes regular listening sessions, anonymous opportunities for them to provide feedback, and then facilitate conversations across teams. These practices will help identify operational challenges early, strengthen decision-making, and build trust across our organization. Transparency is essential. Excuse me. Staff should understand priorities, why the decisions are made, what is expected of them, and how all of that relates back to our mission. To support that, I will provide recurring departmental updates, written communication after major decisions, and small group or one-on-one conversations as needed. Accountability is clarity, fairness, and follow-through. My goal, again, is to ensure that staff have the support, guidance, and stability to make sure they perform at a high level. With over two decades at Kalamazoo County, I have seen how a strong internal culture transforms how we serve our community. I see a department where employees are respected, informed, and empowered. When the team feels connected to our mission, the impact ripples forward, enhancing program performance, improving coordination, and ultimately driving better public health outcomes. Strengthening internal culture is not just organizational work. It's foundational to improving community health. When staff are aligned and supported, our programs perform more effectively, our responses are more coordinated, and our service quality improves. Our vision is a Kalamazoo County where every resident can achieve optimal health, regardless of geography, background, or circumstance. This aligns with the county's strategic priorities and with our mandate to protect and promote population health. We know that health is shaped not only by medical care. Because of this, health equity is crucial to the work we do. To truly make an impact on disparities and outcomes, we need to address the structural barriers that prevent equitable access. During my tenure as the maternal child health division manager, I implemented several equity-centered programs aimed at empowering families with the resources and support they need to succeed together. Programs such as Nurse Family Partnership, Healthy Families America, and the Fatherhood Program were all about connecting family to the right tools for growth and stability. Therefore, reviewing data and identifying gaps in program metrics is crucial to ensuring our resources are targeted where they will best be, where they will have the greatest impact in our community, and that we can effectively track and demonstrate improvements in health outcomes for the communities that need it the most. Public health can't succeed in isolation. To make meaningful progress, I will strengthen partnerships across county departments with healthcare providers, schools, neighborhood associations, nonprofits, and community leaders. In my first year, a key strategy will be to convene multi-sector work groups to review the community needs assessment and identify emerging disparities. Internally, advancing health starts with a supported and aligned workforce. Externally, it requires building partnerships, trust, fostering collaboration with those community partners. As Health Officer, I will lead these efforts, ensuring our work is shaped by lived experience, strengthens community relationships, and drives measurable improvements in health outcomes. This roadmap outlines the five priorities that will guide our first year. Together, these focused areas strengthen internal operations, improve coordination, and expand our impact. Internal alignment. I'll work to break down silos, improve communications, and help staff see how their work ties directly to our mission. It means setting shared goals, stream working workflows, and holding collaborative team check-ins. Equity framework. Equity is both a guiding principle and a practical framework. We will conduct assessments across programs, implement targeted outreach strategies, and track progress through equity-focused measures. Community engagement. Strengthening engagement ensures our programs reflect real community impact. This is not about outreach alone. It's about co-development, long-term relationship, and trust within our community. Public health modernization. Modernization is not just an operational priority. It's how we ensure that HCS can respond faster, reduce service delays, improve quality, and meet the expectations of the residents who rely on us. Modern systems help us prevent issues earlier, act more efficiently during crisis, and deliver public health services that are convenient, excuse me, consistent, reliable, and equitable across the county. And lastly, visibility and trust. Public health is most effective when residents know who we are, understand what we do, and trust that our commitment is to their well-being. As Health Officer, I will be a visible, reliable communicator during routine operations as well as during crisis, through that strengthening confidence in our department. Together, these five priorities form a clear, united pathway. This roadmap creates real momentum and lays the foundation for long-term impact. Close, excuse me. In closing, Commissioners, thank you for your time and your commitment to serving the residents of Kalamazoo County. As we move forward into this new year, my focus is clear. Strengthen our internal foundation, embed equity in all in every level of our work, deepen community and county partnerships, modernize systems for faster responsiveness, and build visibility and trust. I recognize the responsibility and seriousness of this position. I'm committed to leading with clarity, accountability, collaboration, and compassion. My goal is to ensure that HCS provides reliable, equitable, and high-quality public health services, and that we keep you and our community informed of our progress along the way. I'm grateful for your partnership and your leadership. As your Health Officer, I'm excited to work closely with all of you as we bring this vision to life, tackle challenges, and build our strength as a county. Thank you again for this opportunity. Welcome any questions or feedback.
Thank you, Interim Officer Lentz. So I appreciate your time and uh laying out your thoughts in your presentation. Open this to Commissioner questions. We'll start with Commissioner Gisler.
Thank you, Chair. If you'll humor me, I have three questions.
Sure.
Good evening, Deb. First of all, I want to say that uh despite some issues that Jim Rutherford and I had, well, they were few, but I thought they were significant. Uh, the fact that he picked you as his deputy makes me think, you know, well of you. He made a couple of mistakes, but uh putting you on board was not, excuse me, not one of them. Questions I have for you are, I assume you were fully certified, so there's gonna be no issue like Otterba County has had. You know, wanting to fire the the Health Director and then finding out, oh, my God, we can't do that.
Right.
Uh, okay, you're you're certified by the state to do this work.
As interim, that needed to be um certified before I could move into that interim position. So you had to meet all of those qualifications beforehand per the Public Health Code.
Excellent. Well, I salute the uh the review staff that undertook that. They started off well. Uh, excuse me. Uh, it's puzzled me, and I've mentioned it several times before, and I don't know if there's a good answer, but I'd like to hear, you know, in a few paragraphs, your attitude about the fact that black babies have an infant mortality rate significantly higher than white babies in this county, bordering on what you would expect in big metro areas like Detroit. What's what's going on? Do you have any thoughts?
So Kalamazoo is kind of unique in that, and we have reduced our infant mortality, both for our black infants and our white infants. However, that disparity between the two is still significant at three to four times that rate. So we continue to work with our community partners, Cradle in particular, along with a lot of other nonprofit organizations to look at what those reasonings are. Kalamazoo County does receive funding for FEMA, which is the fetal infant mortality review. So every month, we review cases of infants that have died. It's a large group of um community players that interact with families, and we come forward with recommendations. A lot of those recommendations um are put forward to our, it's called our Community Action Team, and that's the Cradle Governance Board that is um uh formed by a variety of uh higher executives within the community from the hospitals, AQHC, uh social service agencies that can be impactful in moving some of those changes that need to happen. It's slow-moving, but we're making progress, I feel. Unfortunately, that disparity is still still there, and I don't know that anybody has one answer for that. I think it's gonna be a collective partnership with many people in order to move that forward to get to zero.
Thank you. My final question, excuse me, uh, one of the points where Jim and I disagreed rather vociferously had to do with him shutting down from a bureaucratic position all school districts during COVID. Would you discuss how you might approach that kind of a decision?
I think when emerging threats happen or crisis like that, I think it's having a conversation with the administrator, with the board chair, with those that then um informing them of what is currently happening, giving my options, and then making a educated decision on what might be next steps. Sometimes the right answer might not be or might not be the answer that's needed for everybody, but where do you compromise in order to make the situation best for the majority of the population in which that emerging threat may occur?
In that case, rather than letting the individual school districts make their own decision?
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair.
Commissioner Morales. Thank you, Chair. Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I always look forward to what the first three hundred and sixty-five days will look like, but more specifically, the first hundred. So um if if this is awarded to you, you'll hear more from me about what's what's these first hundred looking like. So um Commissioner Gisler mentioned um infant mortality rates, and a lot of times women of color get uh pushed away when they describe their pain. I know that Kalamazoo County Health Human Services can only do so much, but how would you communicate if you have a a pregnant individual coming in or someone just with a high level of pain? And how do you communicate to Bronson gorgeous so that they are not brushed to the side, that it's documented? I don't know if there are shared systems. I'm I'm not clear on that, but how do you help um support specifically women of color that are going through these situations that are losing their life? We just saw a um a black woman down south have to give birth in her car because they didn't take her labor pain seriously um over a thirty-minute period. So I'm interested in that. Um. COVID, I almost died from COVID, so um when uh our Health Officer made that decision, you know, everybody had their qualms about it. Um, but I was in support of that, not because I'm a Democrat, but because I saw several folks um in this community die and succumb to that um that vicious virus, not only here, but nationwide, where people couldn't even say goodbye to their loved ones because of um biased decisions that were being made. So um I'll go ahead and let you answer that first question, and I have one more.
So the first question relates to the infant mortality rate and uh black voices being unheard. So with FEMA, some of those recommendations, what we do what we do in FEMA is review um we actually meet and have a home visit with the mom and the family if they choose to do that after an infant death. We get their story. From that, we then put it forth to FEMA where all of the people, there's at least forty, fifty people from different agencies within Kalamazoo County, and we discuss that and what could be recommendations and how that behavior could change moving forward. Those recommendations are then brought to the Community Action Team. Again, there's uh VPs, directors from a variety of social service agencies, hospitals, uh OBGYN practices, and things of that nature. We then put that recommendation forward saying, this has become a major theme. We need to figure out how to change that. We work at those agencies to determine how best how to navigate some of those things. I think the beauty with county at HCS in particular is we have multiple home visitation programs where families, especially those of color, are paired up with a case manager, community health worker, nurse, and they are then teaching, they are listening to their story as they go through that pregnancy and have that baby. They're able to provide them education and how to advocate for themselves, what their rights are. So when they go in and they say, I have pain, don't walk away. Make sure that your rights are identified there and and make sure that somebody's hearing you. So I think um I I truly, my background is in maternal child health, so bringing forth those programs has been essential and critical to our community, and I think they've done a lot of great work to get that infant mortality down. But again, the disparity is still there. We have to look at what other factors are impacting that. Is it housing? Is it transportation? Is it access? Um, some of those things moving forward.
I appreciate that. As we move into housing being a um a health crisis. My last question is, as we provide all types of education with sexual health, we still see increasingly disturbing rates in Kalamazoo for HIV and different um viruses that could be spread throughout the community. What are we doing outside of general education? I know that uh Family Health Center usually has buses at the high schools. I know that Norx has a facility, but um what are we doing to help reduce those rates when all things education is not specifically working specifically towards African-American populations, Hispanic populations who are getting, you know, these diseases at alarming rates?
So a couple of things. So we do now have a school-based health clinic at Norx. They are doing some of that testing as well and offering that opportunity. Over the summer months, we were very strategic in utilizing our mobile unit. Our STI and our health education team looked, um, our epidemiology team looked at where those pockets of high rates were, and we took that mobile unit and did pop-up clinics or pop-up testing. We tried to be consistent where we at so that people would know they're always gonna be there on Friday afternoon. So trying to meet people where they were at to get them tested, um, set them up with a a clinic visit or uh provide that education to hear the consequences or um seriousness of that. So I think that was very beneficial. We plan to move that forward. That's part of our internal strategic plan is utilizing that mobile unit to meet people in the neighborhood so that they don't have to worry about access, that they can start seeing our familiar faces and not be afraid to come into the Health Department to receive some of those services as well.
I'll go to Vice Chair, and then to Commissioner Ray.
Um, thank you very much for your presentation. Um, my first question I was gonna ask, I think Commissioner Gisler pretty much asked it, and I have a maybe a different opinion on on that. I was basically um will you have the ability to make an unpopular decision if you feel that it's in the best interest for the citizens as a whole, based on the information you know at that time?
And I think you have to weigh all of that information and get all of that feedback from people and weigh the best option that's the best for your community for whatever emerging threat is placed before you. So, you know, that's that's the authority that the Health Officer has in that situation. So, yes.
And then my second comment is, but it's not, it's a more of a, it's a comment. Um. I really appreciated your talking about the um the culture of the office and how the culture creates. And I think it's a testament to all those people standing behind you right now.
Thank you.
But it is the culture that that drives the the work, and I think that you're you're on to something there. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ray.
Thank you, Chair. Welcome, Deb. Um, congratulations on making it this far in the process. Um, I have two questions. I'll start with my culture question since John brought it up. Um, how would you describe the current culture within HCS? And then based on what you've learned so far, do you believe staff feel supported, respected, and empowered? And what strategies would you use to strengthen or improve the workplace culture if it's needed? Sorry, I wrote really small. I can't, I can barely see it.
So um I did, part of my presentation was identifying that we do have some challenges within our department regarding regarding culture. Um, I think being visible, being available for staff to come and chat with you about whatever's bothering you, knowing that they have a safe place to um either vent or give their opinion without there being any repercussions to that. I think that speaks to who I am as a person. I've always had an open door policy. Um, you know, if anybody needs to speak, they they should feel welcome in my office. Moving forward, I'm just planning to have more opportunities for staff to talk with me and provide solutions on how we change that culture. Public health is a certain niche. You have to be of a certain it it's not for everybody, and there's a certain dedication and heart that comes along with that. We have a lot a lot of people in our department that have longevity. I want them to, I want them to continue to grow with Kalamazoo County and the Health Department because we do good work, and I don't need to keep transitioning a revolving door every two years trying to train people to then go out there in the community. You have to be relatable to your community. So I'm looking for that as well. People that have lived experience. I want them to share that with me as well as what challenges they're facing, and then how can I correct that? So not only looking for their feedback, but working with me on finding tangible um uh solutions to some of the issues we're having happening. to some of the issues we're having.
Thank you for that. My second question is, tonight, we're considering a resolution declaring housing a public health crisis. With housing being a social determinant of health, I felt like there was some aspect of the public health perspective that was missing from the resolution. So I just wanted to hear what your perspective is on the declaration, and how would that designation influence your priorities and actions as a public officer?
So I think housing is one social determinant of health that impacts folks. It's not the only one. So I think it has to be a coordinated effort in looking at all of those things that our families are either, you know, what they're confronted with, and how do we address all of those? Certainly with housing, there's certain things within, you know, complexes or within rental properties that we may not know about or may not have have the information to then go in there and change things. There's a lot of people that the situation they live in may be the only situation they know that they can have right now, so you're not going to get a lot of complaints because if they're put out, they have nowhere else to go. So it's working with our community partners to say, okay, we know we have this issue. How do we rectify that? But then if we displace all of these peoples, what's the contingency plan in that so that our families aren't impacted by that? Again, housing is one of those issues that is multifaceted, so looking at how we can address that and making sure that we have the voice of those with lived experience to then make resolutions and change the way that we do things here in Kalamazoo County.
I feel like I have 50 follow-up questions, but thank you.
Let me, anyone else have a first? All right, so I have a couple as well. So I also want to hearken back to the COVID pandemic and hearing you sort of articulate, you've got to evaluate, you know, what's best for the community, and you sort of stated, maybe that would include consulting the administrator or board chair on decision-making. What role do political elected or appointed officials really weigh into what is a technical health decision? Should that be unduly influenced by political pressures? Or how would you evaluate, you know, what's right to do for the community versus what maybe a political body may want you to do? And are there ways that we could create a buffer that would help with decision-making? Or do you see alignment with political interests as important in your decision-making?
I really wasn't intending on the political aspect of that, but all of you come from different areas, and you bring something different to the conversation. So having that conversation and hearing that voice, and then putting that into my decision, I think that would be beneficial. Certainly, as a department within county government, I think it's to my advantage to keep you all informed and to ensure that, you know, have you thought about this? Or what is this? And putting those factors into place and then coming forth with my recommendation so that you feel that you can support what that recommendation is moving forward.
And just to clarify again, if you make a recommendation and the board isn't supportive, are you comfortable asserting your authority as a health officer to make a decision, even if it faces some political opposition?
Absolutely.
Okay. I also want to touch on, we're talking about the maternal-infant health work, and I appreciate your passion for that and the efforts that you've engaged in at HCS over your career there on those aspects. Would it be accurate, you know, you said it's sort of hard to determine a singular reason for the disparity, but would it be accurate to say that the experience of living through racist pressure is an identified factor and probably the primary identified factor that's impacting survivability of mothers and babies of color in our community?
I would concur with that.
Okay. So thank you for that. On that, also, you talked through about some of the programming that helps inform mothers, for example, in this circumstance, how to advocate. And I'm sure you're aware in health research and literature, women tend to not be listened to in medical clinics, and women of color then also face additional barriers to being heard. Beyond teaching, you know, the individual person, what strategies do you help them understand that they can employ to bring support with them in advocacy? Do we teach other support, like partners, caregivers, friends, to also help advocate? Or do we offer any direct advocacy with health providers for people that we interact with?
So I think that's a work in progress for us. I think our CHWs and our nurse providers within some of those home visitation programs or even within our AAA program, they do a lot of advocacy. They give those resources and tools to our clients. They're also willing to, in a situation, go in and help them speak or help them get the justice or the information or services that they need. So I think we continue to grow with that. Advocacy is kind of one of those things that, there's a fine line between educating and advocacy, so determining like what your funding comes from. It may just, you can't go out there and advocate. We can teach somebody how to advocate. So I think with funding changes, that might change as well in some of the guidance that comes with some of these grants moving forward. I think we're seeing more of social justice being implemented in some of those grants and the indicators within those grants. So it might be something that we will see more of our community health workers doing more of.
So you see grants continuing to support social justice efforts that are coming through?
So we currently have grants for our Healthy Babies America, or Healthy Babies, Healthy Start Program, Healthy Start Initiative. We receive state funding for NFP and our Healthy Families America. We also, you know, you could also include WIC in that and speaking with moms and having that relationship every month or every three months with some of the staff there, that they're bringing forth that concern that they have, and then listening to them as how, how do I move this forward? Them offering suggestions, tools, resources, connections within the community. You know, if we work with other social services or other nonprofits in the community that then can come in and assist with that family, that offers them more tools to then speak to what they should receive as care.
Also in alignment, sort of this discussion about the grant funding, I know, you know, the environment or particularly federal funding is, has been shifting. What do you see as emerging funding threats at HCS? What programs do you think, you know, become vulnerable, and what's your plan to mitigate those threats?
So right now, our, I think the only I think our primary concern right now is our HERSA grant because that's the one most jeopardized moving forward. We have funding through, excuse me, March of '26. Some of the other funding are flowed through the state, so there is some concern. I don't know if we'll see that in '26. It might be looking more toward '27, depending on how some of that funding is appropriated. I think with my strategy moving forward is with our Healthy Start Initiative, working with the national office as well as other states that have looked at different funding and how to support that. Advocating at the national level as well as utilizing our representatives and legislation to look at how that would impact our moms and our babies moving forward. I think with some of the state funding, you know, it might be what's mandated and what other social service agencies can do the work if we don't get the funding for it.